Welcome, PSM 201. Study Section 5: Descriptive Statistics. Introduction. In the present age, we have access to large volumes of data every day. In order to use and interpret the data correctly is essential to making informed decisions. Thus, the first step of data analysis is to summarize all of this data, both graphically and numerically, so that we can understand what the data is saying. This phase of statistics is called descriptive statistics. There are three tools used to achieve this purpose: Frequency Table (tabular descriptive), Graphs or Charts (graphical descriptive), and Summary (numerical descriptive) statistics. Descriptive statistics are, as their name suggests, descriptive. They describe what the data shows. They do not generalize beyond what the data consider. In this study section, you will learn about descriptive statistics, which is used to summarize and display data. After completing this unit, you will know what you can do once you have collected data and how to present the data. Therefore, summarization and organization of large volume of data into meaningful forms are useful for evidence-based planning and decision-making. Learning Outcomes for Study Section 5. At the end of this section, you should be able to define tabular presentation of data, explain graphical presentation of data, explain numerical summarization and presentation of data, the other descriptive statistics measure. Tabular Presentation of Data. By definition, tables are data presented in columns and rows by one or more classification variable. Tables are sets of data represented in orderly manner that shows clearly trend and interrelationship between component parts. There are principal units used in publications to organize and present important findings of the survey or census. Table format should be prepared with the consideration of data requirement and the preparation should be done at the same time that the questionnaire covers all the items of information required. Frequency Tables. Frequency Tables are very useful for preliminary exploration of data to understand the distribution. They serve select purpose in this, in the process of data cleaning by exhibiting patterns, exceptions, differences, and other relationships. It also serves as the basis for preparing more visual display of data, such as graphs and charts, where some of the details may be lost. Generally, they are used for data presentation. They can be simple tables for one variable at a time or cross-tabulation for two or more variables at a time. Samples of simple and cross-tables are shown in Tables 3.1 and Table 3.2 respectively. Table 3.1 and 3.2 above are for qualitative variables, sex and marital status. For such tables, the number of rows and columns depend on the categories of variables concerned. In this era of statistical software, such table are very easy to construct. For quantitative variables, there would be need to first of all group the data into categories or class intervals. An important rule for quantitative variable is that the class intervals should not be too many and there must be no overlap from one interval to another. The number of intervals depend on the smallest and largest value of the variable, sample size, and level of precision desired. When there are several variables to be summarized from a dataset, it is advisable that the variables be grouped in separate tables. For instance, there could be table for socio-demographic characteristics, another table for clinical characteristics, another one for laboratory parameters. Irrespective of the type of variable, all frequency tables must have the following features: Simple and non-too-information loaded. Clear titles to indicate what the table contains, where data was collected, and when. The concept of person, place, and time. Clear row and column titles with unit of measurement clearly stated. In cross-tabulations, rows and column total must add up to the overall sample size. Some important terms used in constructing frequency table: Classes. Class intervals. Categories of grouping data. Frequency. It is the number of times a value or group of values of a variable occurs, that is, number of observations that fall in a class. Frequency Distribution. Listing of all classes and their frequency. Relative Frequency. Ratio of frequency of a class to the total number of observations. Relative Frequency Distribution. Listing of all classes and their relative frequencies. Class Limit. The end numbers of each class. Upper class limit is the largest number of the class and the lower class limit is the smallest number of the class. Class Boundaries. When the upper limit of each class is the same as the lower limit of the next class. The class limits are referred to as class boundaries. This is obtained by taking the midpoint of the upper limit of each class and the lower limit of the next. Class Mark. It is the midpoint between the lower and the upper class limit of a class. Class Size or Width. It is the difference between the upper and lower class boundaries. Relative and Cumulative Frequencies. When frequency tables are generated for quantitative variables, relative and cumulative frequencies could be computed to explore the data distribution. These are illustrated in Table 2.3 below. Relative Frequency is the proportion of the total observation in each interval of the quantitative variable. It is calculated by dividing the frequency of each class by the total sample size. It can be multiplied by 100 to convert it to percentage. The relative frequency refers to the midpoint of each class interval. The cumulative frequency implies the total number of observations less than the upper class boundary of the class interval. Tables such as 3.3 can be used to answer several questions about the data distribution. We can deduce the proportion of respondents below or above each 24 years and older. One could also derive the probability that an individual selected at random belongs to a particular age group. Graphical Presentation of Data. Most often times, diagrams, charts, or graphs make better visual impression than tables. Graphical Presentation of Data is actually the presentation of statistical results in the form of charts, which are geometrical representation of size or magnitude of a given data. This chart can be in form of lines, rectangles, segments, and pictures. It shows only brief set of statistical results. Charts often used for presentation of statistical data are bar charts, line charts, and pictogram. They are known to serve the following purpose: Obtain at a glance a summary of the statistical results contained in the data. Show the relationships that exist within the data. Charts or Graphs. They can be used to explore the data to get in-depth understanding of distribution of quantitative variables. Graphs are normally plotted on x-y rectangular axes with dependent variables on the vertical y-axis. Many of the desired qualities of table also apply to graphs. Simplicity, clarity, clear title, and labeling of axes are non-negotiable. The type of data, quantitative or categorical, determines the choice of graphical illustration. For quantitative variable, histogram, frequency, polygon, box plot, and scatter diagrams are common. Why bar charts and pie charts are the most common graph for categorical variables? Bar Charts. This is the representation of magnitude or size by a rectangular chart. They can be in form of simple bar charts, multiple bar charts, and component bar charts. Simple Bar Charts. It shows the actual figures for each item. It is used where changes in totals only are required. Illustrative sample of simple bar chart is shown in Figure 2.1. Component Bar Charts. It shows virtually the way in which a whole data is separated. Component Bar Charts is used where changes in total and an indication of the size of each component part are required. Multiple Bar Charts. It groups two or more bar charts together. It is used where changes in the actual values of the component figures are wholly required and the overall total is not important. More than one set of comparison can be made. For example, sex of patients can be compared from month to month as the case may be. Pie Charts. This is a divided circle used to represent different part of a whole total. The different part are shown as sectors of a circle. It is useful where it is desired to show the relative proportion of the figures that make up a single overall total. Pie Charts are not suitable charts where there are many divisions or a series of figure as a number of it are not easy to compare. In order to construct a pie chart, the following steps should be followed: Calculate the proportion that each part bears to the whole and multiply it by 360 to half each part in degree. Draw a circle of any radius bearing in mind that a circle consists of 360 degrees with the head of a protector. Draw all the angle for the different parts in the circle. Histogram. Histogram is a form of graphical presentation used to show data on interval scale or continuous variable. Unlike bar charts, it makes use of slender rectangles adjoining each other. It is actually a plot of the frequency distribution, which area under the histogram is equivalent to the total frequency. Other type of graph are well described in many statistics textbooks. An important point to remember is the type of graph appropriate for different type of variables and how to make sense of data displayed in a graph. Numerical Summarization and Presentation of Data. Numerical Descriptive Measures of the Population, however, are called parameter summary indices and numerical measures which are computed to represent a variable. These are measures of central tendency or location and measures of spread or dispersion. The two types of measures. Measures of location or central tendency. These are single numerical values used to summarize a quantitative variable. There are values that can be set to adequately represent the entire observations and indicate the central position or location of all other values of a variable. In other words, they are used to describe the data in the sample by giving an idea of the center and distribution of the data. The three most common measures of central tendency are arithmetic mean, median, mode. The relationship between mean and median are useful in assessing symmetry of any data distribution. If mean is equal to median, is equal to mode, it applies symmetry. If mean is less than median, less than mode, it implies skewness. If mean is greater than median, greater than mode, it implies positive skewness. If mean is less than median, less than mode, it implies negative skewness. Others which depend on the nature of the data include harmonic mean, geometric mean, and weighted mean. This theory will not be covered in this learning material. Arithmetic Mean. This is the average of all entire values of a quantitative variable. It is calculated by adding up all values of a particular variable and dividing by the number of observations. By implication, it is the numerical value which each unit of observation we have when the total observations are shared equally among every unit of the sample. Mean is equal to sum of all observations over number of observations. X bar is equal to summation of X over N. Examples. Five systolic blood pressures in millimeter mercury. N is equal to 5, R, 120, 80, 90, 110, 95. This can be represented with map type notation. X is equal to 120, X2 is equal to 80, so X5 which is equal to 95. The sample mean is easily computed by adding up the five values and dividing by 5. In statistical notation, the sample mean is frequently represented by a letter with a line over it. X bar is equal to 120 plus 80 plus 90 plus 110 plus 95, all over 5. Then we have 99 millimeter mercury. Example 2. Suppose five pregnant women book for antenatal care at gestational age: 18 weeks, 16 weeks, 20 weeks, 23 weeks, and 14 weeks. What is their mean gestational age at booking? Mean, which is the X bar, is equal to summation X over N. We have 18 plus 16 plus 20 plus 23 plus 14, all over 5. We have 91 over 5, which will give us 18.2 weeks. On the average, each of them booked at 18.2 week gestation. It will be observed that out of the five women, some book at gestational age below and some above the average value of 18.2 weeks. These variations between the average and individual measurements is referred to as spread or dispersion around the central age, central average value. There are numerical measures that could be computed to summarize this and they are called measures of spread, dispersion, or variability. This will be discussed later. The example above is for few observations which are called ungrouped data. We could have grouped data which are presented as frequency table like those in Table 3.3 above. Brief explanation of arithmetic mean from such organized data are as follows: The mean of the given data is calculated by dividing the sum of all observations by the number of observations. If X1, X2, X3, XN are the given observation with their respective frequency, F1, F2, F3, FN, then sum of observations which is F1X1 plus F2X2 plus FNXN. Sum of frequencies which is F1 plus F2 plus F3 plus FN. Mean, X bar, is equal to F1X1 plus F2X2 plus FNXN over F1 plus F2 plus FN. We all have summation F1X1 over summation F. However, ungrouped data are used to explain the descriptive statistics measures in these. Relative merit and demerit of the mean as a summary index. It is the most useful summary index for quantitative variables, especially where there are no extreme values in the observation. The mean is amenable to further statistical computations. It utilizes all available data in its computation. It is sensitive to outliers, extreme values. It is inappropriate when data is skewed. Median. The median is the middle observation when you arrange a set of observations in order of magnitude ascending or descending. Half of the observations are above and below the median value. It is the same as the second quarter and 58 presentai. Quarter and presentai will be explained later. When the number of observation is even, the median is the average of the two middle observations. It is determined mainly by middle values in a sample and insensitive to other values unlike the arithmetic mean that uses all observations. Example. In the example above on the gestational age at booking, obtain its median solution. Arrange the observation in order of magnitude: 14, 16, 18, 20, 23. The middle number is 18. That implies that the median is 18 weeks. Relative merit and demerit of the median as a summary index. 1. It is the appropriate summary index for quantitative variables when there are extreme values in the observation that is skewed data. 2. It is less sensitive to outliers or extreme values. 3. The median is not amenable to further statistical computations. 4. Concentrate on ranks of value rather than absolute values. 5. It does not utilize all available data in its computation. 6. It is useful for summarizing ordinary and discrete data. Mode. The mode is the most frequently occurring value in a set of observations. If the data is illustrated graphically in a histogram or bar chart, the mother value will have the highest bar. A data distribution may be unimoda, one mother value by mother, two mother values, multimoda, more than two modes. The mode as a summary index has no special merit over the arithmetic mean and median. Some of its features include least-used measure of central tendency, the observation that occurs most frequently, easiest measure to understand, explain, identify, mathematical properties rather than intractable. Most may not exist if there are many large numbers of possible values. May be more than one mode. Is sensitive to extreme values, outliers. Does not use all data. Other Descriptive Statistics Measure. The following which are sometimes referred to as measures of partition, measures of non-central location, are good descriptive measures in ordered observations. Some of these measures could be estimated from the cumulative frequency call, OGG. Quarters. These are values that divide the set of ordered observations into far equal parts. There are first, second, and third quarters. One quarter of the observation is below the first quarter. The value that separates the lower 75% from the upper 75% of the observations. Why the third quarter? The value that separates the lower 75% from the upper 75% of the observation as one quarter of all observation above its value. The second quarter is the same as the median. The method of calculation is similar to the median. Destiles. These are value dividing the ordered data into 10 equal parts. Percentals. This divides a set of ordered observation into 100 equal parts. The 20th percentile is the value below which 20% of the observation lie. The 20th percentile is the value below which 20% of the observation lie. 25th percentile is the same as first quarter. 50th, 58th percentile is the same as second quarter and median. 75th percentile as third quarter. Measures of Spread or Dispersion. Measures of spread, dispersion, or variation summarizes how far each of the values in a set of observation are from the central value. They also indicate the closeness or otherwise of the individual observation to one another. Whenever a measure of central tendency is estimated, it is expected to be accompanied by a measure of spread in order to have full descriptive statistics. The common measures of spread are range, inter-quarter range, variance, standard deviation, coefficient of variation. In these notes, emphasis is laid on the understanding of the statistical meaning of these measures. Illustrative examples are only provided to help the comprehension of the concepts. Detailed and extensive examples are available in standard textbooks. Range. This is the difference between the highest maximum and the lowest minimum values of a variable in a set of observations. It is measured in the original unit of the data and takes the total change in a variable into account. For the purpose of practical reporting, it is better to state the lowest and highest values rather than just the range. The median is usually accompanied by the range as a summary index. The demerit of range as a measure of spread include: It does not utilize all available data for a variable. It becomes unreliable if there are extreme values in the data. Inter-quarter range. This is the difference between the top and the first quarter or the difference between the 25th percentile and the 75th in a set of data. It is an improvement over the range by focusing on the central portion of the data. That is, it concentrates on the middle 50% of the ordered observations. In other words, it gives an idea of the middle 50% of the observations. Unlike the range, it is not affected by the outlines. Variance and Standard Deviation. Variance is the mean of the squared deviations of each observation from the arithmetic mean. Its unit of measurement is a square of the original unit. In order to address this shortcomings, standard deviation is introduced. The standard deviation is the square root of the variance and it is the best measure of spread for symmetrical or skewed data. It is widely used in other statistical computations, especially in influential statistics. The standard deviation shows on the average how far each data value is from the arithmetic mean. It is the measure of spread that accompanies the arithmetic mean in order to provide full descriptive statistics for a quantitative symmetrical variable. Examples. Calculate the variance and standard deviation for the data on gestational age in Example 2.2. Solution. Step 1: Compute the mean gestational age. Coefficient of Variation. This is a relative measure used to compare the variation of two variables measured in different units. It is dimensionless, thereby useful for comparing the spread of two or more datasets efficiently. When the units are different, that is, it is a measure that corrects for differences in magnitude or unit of observations. It is calculated by dividing the standard deviation by the mean and expressed in percentage. This is expressed as coefficient of variation, which is equal to S over X bar percent. The smaller the coefficient of variation, the minimal the spread. Ordinarily, you will want to look at the standard deviation and argue that weight with SD is equal to 6.13 as greater variability. However, remember that the two variables were not measured in the same unit for the required comparison to be meaningful. The coefficient of variation will be required. the coefficient of variation will be required. Using the coefficient of variation, height as the greater variability than weight. Summary of study section five: in this study section you have learned that by definition, tables are data presented in columns and row by one or more classification variable. Tables are set of data presented in an orderly manner that shows clearly trend and interrelationship between component parts. Table formats should be prepared with the consideration of data requirements and the preparation should be done at the same time that the questionnaire covers all the high terms of the information required. Frequency tables are very useful for preliminary exploration of data to understand its distribution. Relative frequency is the proportion of the total observations in each interval of the quantitative variable. The cumulative frequency implies the total number of observations less than the upper class boundary of the class interval. Graphical presentation of data is actually the presentation of statistical results in the form of charts which are geometrical representation of size or magnitude of a given data. Pie chart is a divided circle used to represent different parts of a whole total. Different parts are shown as sector of a circle. Histogram is a form of graphical presentation used to show data on interval scale or continuous variables. Unlike bar charts, it makes use of slender rectangles adjoining each other. Numerical descriptive measures of the population however are called parameters. The median is in the middle observation when you arrange a set of observation in order of magnitude ascending or descending. The mode is the most frequently occurring value in a set of observations. Measures of spread, dispersion or variation summarizes how far each of the values in a set of observation are from the central value. Variance is the mean of the square deviations of each observation from the arithmetic mean. Coefficient of variation is a relative measure used to compare the variation of two variables measured in different units. Now we've come to the end of study section five. Thanks for listening.